And just quickly heads up, since I totally forgot to tell you, we are recording this just for public records. So just be aware of that. I just started the recording.
Okay. All right. Does everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the landscapes cutting some of it off.
Let's see, this is the letter.
There you go.
This is the letter or the email that Bob had sent. And it's suggestions to the planning board for the growth policy from the Livingston Historic Preservation Commission. It says the downtown historic district is recognized as an invaluable asset to the city, not only as the Commercial and Activity Corps of the Community, but as a magnet for tourists and source of pride for residents. Page 18 of the growth draft policy. Therefore, the Livingston Historic Preservation Commission recommends the addition of the following to facilitate the above affirmation. And there's a list and starts with promote the Historic Preservation Commission as a source of information and support. Why don't, why don't we go through each one of these individually? So I'll stop after we've read it and see if there's something someone wants to add, or if we feel like this is something we don't want to include, or you know, I assume. You know, I've reviewed these Bob and I'm on board with, with most of what you wrote. I also feel that a lot of this is already kind of talked about in the growth policy, at least what I was able to, or some of it I was able to.
I agree with you, but I think since they want us to address it, I think it'd be really nice if it was concisely put in rather than scattered throughout a 35 page document.
Yeah. So yeah, so item one is promote the Historic Preservation Commission as a source of information and support. You know, I agree 100% that that's what our, that's what the website kind of defines our role as. That's what we've all, you know, agreed to when we became, became members to handle this. So you know, I guess Matthew, my question to you is in our letter, do we, the intent of this letter is to show support of the, of the draft growth policy and then also any, any additional items that we would like to see included? Is that kind of how?
Well, I understood from P C E C that the city sent it, sent the draft back for them to incorporate community ideas. So it's going, so that's going to be changed. So I don't think we want to support the draft at this point because it's, it's being changed.
So I hesitate on anything P C E C tells you without actually asking the city first. That's not quite accurate, but that may happen. There's it's sort of, it's complicated with the legalities of what the planning board did unfortunately on Wednesday, and we're working through that. But that may very well happen. I think the intent of this letter specifically is to get all of the boards and for you, the historic board, get your comments, any suggestions you have on updating the draft. You don't need to specifically express if you support or don't support the draft. I would probably stay away from that just because we could end up having a five hour conversation about whether or not you support it. We're really looking for your recommendations specifically from the historic preservation point of view of how it could be improved or what you like about it. If you want to include that.
Okay. All right. So then, so then following up on Bob's information, that's Bob, that's appears what, what you were doing is, is just adding additional bullet points for them, for us to ask them to address or, or you know, incorporate or evaluate into the report.
A lot of hand waving from Tom and we still can't really hear him. We'll keep going and I'll try to contact Tom and we can try to figure something out.
Okay. Okay. The next item is support grants from, from TIF monies for facade and structural upgrades. Again, I, I'm on board with that. I, does anyone have any comments on the first two items? Go encourage infill.
If you want to, if you wanted to on that, you could put sidewalks because we also are trying to, we are going to be doing some sidewalks on Third Street.
Okay.
And because that was what we originally were supposed to be doing with sidewalks. So maybe we should add that in there too. And
Okay. Structural upgrades and sidewalks. Okay. Encourage infill development. You know, this is, this is, I think this is super important. Just, you know, one thing that was actually written in this, in this draft document was was the, you know, design standards relative to, to the historic, the Livingston historic character. You know, right now, the only design standards we actually have are, are, or the only design standards that we follow are the, you know, the Secretary of Interiors, the rehab and, and guidelines for rehab for historic buildings. You know, I think it would be nice to have some sort of design standard for new development in, in the downtown.
I have a question. We're talking about, about our our purview with, with the downtown historic district, right?
Correct.
So maybe we should add that on to the second item.
Add, add what?
Support grants from TIF monies for facade and structural upgrades in the, in the downtown historic district.
Okay.
Rather than just leave that open for everyone in the growth policy.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
I've got a question. Can I just interrupt for a second? Because one thing that is kind of an elephant in the yard here is that Livingston is going to be doing a master plan for Livingston, right, Matthew? So how does that work with this growth policy?
Question. Hey, sorry. I'm trying to get Tom in here. Can you ask that question again?
Well, eventually we're, we've been talking about doing a Livingston master plan. How's that work? And some people were saying that that should happen before the growth policy. Where do we stand now with that? Cause a lot of the stuff we're going to be dealing with would be included in a master plan. So do you have any insight?
Can you ask the beginning part again? Sorry. Tom is on the speakerphone and I missed the very beginning there.
We've been talking about having a Livingston master plan. And originally when they're doing the growth policy, they said, why don't we have a master plan before growth policy? My question is a lot of the stuff we're dealing with would be part of a master plan too for downtown. So where are we in relation to the master plan and the growth policy?
Um, honestly, I'm not sure what was brought up with the master plan, a growth policy. Bozeman called their growth policy a comprehensive plan. There's a lot of different words for it. I don't know what they were referring to specifically between the difference between a master plan and what the growth policy is. I'm not sure what they're looking for. I don't think you would do a master plan before you would do a growth policy. And they sound like relatively similar documents to me. So I'm not sure you would do both. Generally you would do smaller neighborhood type plans, like a downtown plan under the growth policy. You wouldn't have two competing master plans.
No, I just wanted to say something.
Nope. There's, we can almost hear Tom now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Good. Okay. I just went to another computer.
Okay. All right. So, so Bob, talking about your, you know, the, the relationship of the master plan to the growth policy, I think.
I just was throwing it out. I think Matthew probably defined it good enough for us.
Okay. All right. Tom, as we were going through here, we went through the first two items that Bob had.
I heard, I heard some of that. I have some, I just sort of had a general comment. I mean, and this sort of came out of that meeting the other night. I'm not sure, Bob, you were in that meeting for a while, but I think you had to leave, didn't you?
Right.
I think one of the, I think the main sort of trend of that meeting was that the master plan was sort of, sort of concentrated on areas to be developed and didn't concentrate enough. And I think this was sort of a general impression on infill of which downtown historical and all of that is a part. Um, so I, I kind of think we maybe should make some comments on, on sort of the general tone of the master plan. I, I frankly sort of found it a little templated. But that whole, that whole issue is really underrepresented. You know, like as it, yeah, as it mentions, you know, the downtown historical district, it's kind of describes it, describes sort of the, the entities that are involved in it, such as the urban renewal and us and you know, you know, the, the other downtown business groups, but it really doesn't say, it doesn't really, it's really kind of absent in the recommendations and goals. If you really read through that, through that master plan, and I think it's something we should comment on. Now, your list is, is, is a, is a pretty good list of, of things to discuss. But as you guys were talking about a, a master plan, one of, one of the things that that, that growth policy probably should do, if it doesn't make specific recommendations is identify things for, for future study that, you know, of which, of which the downtown historical district and/or the urban renewal area is, is one of those. I mean, that should be looked at. You know, instead of this look, which the master plan does from kind of 30,000 feet more closer to the ground. And I think that growth policy should start to make some recommendations along some of those lines and it really doesn't. I mean, I think it kind of says, oh, the, the, the middle of town is kind of okay and makes some general observations about it and sort of focuses on things that could, you know, land both in the city and outside the city that could be developed. Now, I think one of the things that was a very strong theme through that meeting the other night, and I'm not sure how much this represents the, the feelings of the, of the community at large is that and a few people said this in different ways, is that the city really shouldn't look at annexing much more property until it's sort of accommodates growth within its boundaries. Do, do you think that's fair, Matthew?
Yeah. And I think that's covered on, on the list here on number three, which is encourage infill development. I don't know.
Well, I, I kind of would like that to be a stronger statement. I mean, I, I've, the, the, the growth, we should sort of say these general goals, but I think the growth policies should, should should say sort of what needs to be looked at in more detail. I mean, what, what the central core really represents one is, and it, and it can't be said strongly enough. Is, I mean, this is one of the crown jewels of the town. Um, secondly, it's one of those places where some of these goals can be accomplished, like housing densification. It needs a parking policy. It really needs, it's, it really needs a more detail, it really needs a new, more detailed planning process than has been done. I mean, something was done when they established the urban renewal agency, but I don't think that's, that was like 20 years ago. I'm not sure this is, I would, I would like to make a few statements like that, not just kind of a laundry list of things that could be looked at.
And that's certainly something you all can do if you would like to, to make some more general statements. That's certainly, you know, obviously it's appreciated and you're welcome to do that.
So how do we go about doing that? Is it, Tom, is it something that you want? I've taken a few notes, but I don't know if I fully, you know, understand.
I, I think the, I think what we should, first of all, I think in the, there's, there's two sections of the master plan where, where this could be addressed. One is, one is, I think what they, what they're calling community character. And the other one is, is land use. And you could also probably, probably include this in, in the, in the housing policy. There's another, okay, so go, go to the.
Yeah, there was, there was two areas, Tom. I, I think you know, it was one G that.
There was a description and land use of sort of, of that, that addressed that. I think it's in the land use section.
Yeah.
Character.
Yep. So I highlighted a few items. So in community character.
Preserve Livingston's character. I mean, that's, that's a pretty benign statement.
That's pretty benign. And then I went and just highlighted some of the items that they talked to history.
Especially historic downtown.
Right. Preserving historic downtown place, architecture.
It's sort of showing up all through there.
Right, right. And the, the goal one, you know, to preserve and enhance Livingston's unique community character, review, update, enforce policies, procedures, and building design guidelines in Livingston's.
See that the gate, what, what they're talking about is gateways are the entrances to town, which doesn't include us.
Right. The, the reason I highlighted this one was specifically, I, I feel there needs to be more specific design guidelines when we talk about things like infill development, second floor, you know, development, things like that. And then, and then just, just two strategies down, three strategies down, continue to meet the requirements for state historic preservation office certified local government, work, work with the, the.
I, I almost think this ought to be a separate strategy and one should be added. I mean, if we're talking about gateways, what, I mean, this sort of thing is important enough to have its kind of its own category.
Guys, just in the interest of time, Tom, can you suggest some language to add as an additional strategy? And, and we can see if the other board members are in agreement with that and then add that to the list.
Where should this, should this go in community character or should this go in land use?
Depends on what the wording is, I would say.
Scroll down and land use.
Yeah. So we're in land use now.
There's, there's a little section, there's a little section in here which talks about the downtown. Let's see, where is it existing?
Oh, Matthew, do we do the wording or do we say that we, this is what we want them to do?
You can do either, to be honest, whatever you prefer.
We can make a recommendation as to what they should do with the growth policy. Correct?
Right.
Right. So you can make general recommendations, something like, you know, we think that more specific details on design studies need to be included on encouraging design studies or encouraging design standards in the downtown should be included in the growth policy. Or you can suggest specific additional strategies into that or specific language updates. I've seen boards do it both ways. It's just depends on how you want to do it.
What about, what about, okay, good. Scroll down into land use a little bit more. And that's just, that's just a list of the land use.
So then there's the.
Yeah. Here, here's, this kind of describes things and, but it doesn't say much about it.
Right.
And, and then you, and then you get down into, into the goals. I mean, it's means, you know, it's one of the words, it's, but it doesn't say what you do about it. And and I think you can say two things in general. One is, I don't know whether we want to make a statement about whether the city should expand or annex or any, anything like that. That's sort of outside of what we're talking about. But I think we could certainly say that the certain existing areas within, within the city need additional more detailed planning study downtown being one of them. I think you could say the same thing about the, about the railroad property. I think you could say things about, about, about the gateways, but since we're talking about downtown, I think we, we should, we should say that additional. Yeah, this is, I think you could say one is, is that this is, this is one of the locations where many of the, of the goals of this growth study can, can apply, including housing densification, you know, enhancement of community character. That sort of thing. That because of its importance as, as the, as, as the, as the core, I, I kind of think it, you almost want to add a goal to the end of this. If you go down to, to where they're starting to make recommendations and goals and, and policy statements at the end.
So we're talking at the very end.
At the very, I mean, at the, the very end of the land use section.
Oh.
They, they sort of take each one of these sections and say, and have goals and, and.
Oops.
Okay, here we, let's see.
We still in?
Yeah. Is that in land use?
This is still.
You're in land use.
Still under land use.
Okay, here, let's. Well, actually the urban renewal district really includes downtown. Are we going to talk about the historic district or the?
We have, our purview is only the historic district, but we can make recommendations.
Certainly we can. I mean, and frankly, frankly, it's the, the, the urban renewal district is really sort of the, the historic district plus, plus the surrounding area. And really the, is it, isn't, isn't that sort of the original boundaries of the original settlement? Isn't that what defined that?
Somewhat.
Somewhat, but I, I think I read that somewhere.
Well, one of my things is that the urban renewal agency, they took away staffing, which for a volunteer organization, we need staffing. So like what Matthew does here with us. So that was one of my recommendations to make U R A stronger by having a city participation as the secretary or somewhere, somewhere else. We have a member, a state, we have a city commissioner on the board that sits in on the board, non-voting. But we need some, we need some staffing too, as we get more and more involved with things. You know, it just, it's not fair to, to have one of us, one of the members have to do minutes and, and all that stuff. I mean, it's just.
One of the things, one of the things Bob, that you could do is maybe use, use the urban renewal area of which the historic district is a part to make some statements about this is really the area where a lot of, a lot of change can happen, but it almost needs a block by block on the ground study. Because it's just too specific. It's already done. It needs, you know, you can't sort of do some, it's, it's harder to do one size fits all regulations or, or planning statements in a place that's like that. But, and there's where you start to say that the, it needs to be strengthened with, with, with more funding and staff support from the city. It wants some, some, some targeted specific study about what, how, how, how the, how the goals of the, of the growth policy can accom, be accommodated by internal growth rather than external growth. And this is a, a great place to start. And then you can start saying your, 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 your specific, you know, planning goals, which would include housing densification. It's a great place for housing densification. It needs a parking policy. It, it has a character which needs to be established, blah, blah, blah.
Kind of like what my list asked.
But, but I think your list needs a little bit more of a preamble.
Right, right. That's why I was talking about whether you'd want to suggest a master plan of the downtown area.
I think that's, I think that's what we're talking about.
Right.
And, and, and it, and that this, this has sort of been, yeah. The, the growth policy kind of is looking at areas to be developed. And this is, this is really the, the, the central area to be looked at for redevelopment and, and needs, and needs to get some new emphasis put on it. And that would, and that, and under that umbrella, you could put staffing and funding. And I mean, what you were saying is it sort of gets a little bit of tax increment funding every year, but it's not enough to really, to really do anything substantial. You can give a few grants and build a few sidewalks.
Well, the sidewalk's pretty much done. So I think we're going to have much more money in the next cycle of taxes.
But even a, you know, like quarter million, three, 300 a year isn't really enough to, you know, should this, you know, like, should there be public parking because private parking really accommodate, can't accommodate needs, you know, I mean, or, but so, but that's parking and traffic are, are, are really a key component and they really haven't been looked at in any kind of a comprehensive way that I can ascertain.
Well, that's one of mine created downtown parking district or steady commission.
Well, and that's, and that was, that was discussed at our, at our last meeting.
Right. So where should we go with this, Matthew?
So what is, what I'm hearing, and I'm just going to summarize very quickly. It looks like Tom is looking for a pre, basically an introductory paragraph saying the historic preservation commission thinks that the focus of the plan should be downtown. And that if downtown is focused on, many of the goals can, of the plan can be achieved in downtown and should be emphasized for future planning and study over outlining areas of the community. Is that right, Tom?
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Did you get that?
Kind of, but not really. I've, I've been taking notes, but I'm.
Well, somebody needs to draft something.
Right.
And so.
I don't know if I'm comfortable enough to, to, to put in words what you guys just said. If, if you can send me some more bullet points, I'd be happy to try to, try to put those together.
I, I'm not sure we need more bullet points as much as
a general.
That, that sort of a, an introductory statement.
But what's?
Followed, followed up by this laundry list of things that could, that, that could happen there rather than just letting the laundry list, you know, be the, be what we're saying.
Well, that's why, why don't we suggest a master plan of the downtown area?
No, I think that's, I think, I think you should strongly recommend, I think we should strongly recommend that.
And just to, for a quick point of clarification, there is a strategy in the current draft of the growth policy that suggests a downtown plan. Are you suggesting something different than that? Or you just want to emphasize that?
Where is that, Matt?
I'd have to pull it up here quickly.
I didn't find it.
What?
Search downtown plan in the, on the screen.
Well, if you go by what page 18 talked about the downtown district, and it kind of implies that it needs, you know, it needs additional studies because it talks about the emphasis on it.
It needs a, it almost needs a down, you know, it almost needs a part, a very specific, almost parcel by parcel study of that. And I think, I think it should include the entire urban renewal area, not of which the historic district is a part. And certain parts of that will be, you know, able to be redeveloped. They're either underutilized properties, they're properties that, and then there's properties that we want to, we want to, we want to enhance, save and, and, and reinforce.
Hey Ron, so that, that goal is on page 49 and it reads participate in any future process to update the downtown plan. So it's not quite as specific as created a new downtown plan. So you may want to suggest that that language gets strengthened up a little bit.
I think, I think we do.
And that sounds like what you're recommending there.
And I think it should come up at the beginning of our laundry list.
Exactly.
The thing is also the other thing I sent everyone dealing with the tax abatement. I mean, that's not just downtown, that's residential and the three historic districts we have. So, you know, that would fit into what you're saying. And it's not only the historic district, but we're talking about the U R A district and beyond.
And, and for example, that tax abatement, Bob, and we were talking about this the other day, we had a chat the other day. That's been hardly used, not.
Has never been used. It's never been used. It's never been used. In fact, we had to drum and dig it up again. And I don't, I don't, I don't think it's ever been used. I know Ron, I talked to Ron about it at one time, saying that he'd be eligible for underneath that.
Well, I'm going to go, I'm going to go apply for it.
Yeah, I am as well.
Well, yeah, downtown does it, I mean, Matthew would have to tell us, since your taxes downtown go toward the TIF, abating your taxes means less money for the TIF. And I'm not sure whether that would be something you could do since the money is not, has been already applied to something else.
Well, let me make a comment here. I mean, one of the things, for example, that I'm facing in, in my building is as I'm able to sell off pieces, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to file a condo map. That immediately triggers a, a reassessment and a substantial reassessment. And if that could be, if that could be put off for, for a couple of years while the whole building develops, it would really be helpful. So, you know, if you were, if you were, and the fact that I thought, the fact that filing a map makes it even more, you know, important. If you were just renovating a building or taking something, keeping it in its, in its existing use and just, and just fixing the building up or, you know, in, to whatever extent you are, it would be maybe, maybe less of a tax hit.
Well, I think what we can do is just add it to our list.
Yeah.
And then if you apply and you find out if you're applicable, because the city commission makes that decision according to the resolution.
What, what if we, what if we did this, Bob? Let's, let's, let's have three things ahead of the list. Say that this area is in, is in dire need of additional, of additional study. Because it has, because, because of its potential for for, you know, satisfying a lot of the, of the, of the report's goals, including, you know, places for low income housing, housing densification, strong commercial, strong, yeah, a strong commercial core, some, some of those, that statement, that statement one, statement two is the existing, some of the existing devices in the city for, for dealing with this area, including tax abatement and the redevelopment and that historic should be, should be strengthened, should be, you know, another sort of an organizational piece that these things should be str, and then all this to the, to the, and, and the, and this will go toward establishing these, these goals, which is the laundry list of housing densification, historical preservation, you know, you know, parking and traffic, so on and so forth. Or, you know, that, that list could, could go under those kinds of preamble. But, but saying that we have existing devices in place that are underutilized, one, and two, that it's sorely in need of more planning. And these are, and, and your list is kind of the potentials of what could come from that.
Ron, did you get, get all that?
Uh, yeah, so, so the third, so what I, what I've got is, is kind of the, the discussion or the, the, the need for additional study. And I've got a whole list of items that we talked about relative to the need for the additional study. And then item two is the somehow talk about the existing devices in place for, for development. You know, the underu, underutilized should be strengthened with more planning. So what was the third item?
No, I don't think there was one.
Okay.
You know, one would be, we need a plan. It needs to be detailed. This, this area is kind of underplanned and that.
I would, I would use the word master plan because people understand what a master plan is.
You can even make the statement that, yeah, the, the the growth study calls for a, for, for a revision of the zoning code. And that's just not going to cut it in a place like downtown. I mean, you really need to identify specific opportunities for doing things. And then the, then things like the redevelopment, which, which underscores what you're talking about, could be the, could be the mechanism for trying to find an implementation strategy for those things.
Can we just slow down for a second? Cause I want to give Ron a chance to do one thing at a time. And you guys are throwing a wave of things at him, which is great, but he needs to be able to take notes. Can we focus on? So far, what I've heard is two things in the preamble, which is we really need to focus on downtown planning because it can, it basically can hit all of the goals that are in the plan, and that should be really emphasized within the plan or within the growth policy. And the second one is we need to strengthen underutilized mechanisms for improving downtown. And that's sort of, from what I've heard, that should be the introductory paragraph to the letter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ron, do, do you have that?
Yes.
Is everyone on the board okay with that as an introductory paragraph?
The only thing I would say is I really think it'd be great if we could use the word master plan, because I think in planning circles, they know what that means as opposed to just a plan.
No, we will, there, there should be a document of a planning process resulting in a, in a, in a, in an updated downtown or master plan for the, and I think, I think it should be for the urban renewal area.
And I would definitely.
That's a good plan, that's a good planning district. And that would include.
I would definitely suggest using the word downtown or something like that instead of just generic master plan. Just so you know that it's, you're, it's clearly your intent is that you want a downtown master plan, not a master plan for the whole city.
Oh, no.
The urban renewal area is a designated study area with a, with a, with a, with an existing organizational structure to administer it. That, that, that needs, that could, that could be the, the vehicle for, you know, it defines the area. And it also defines who's in charge of it.
So again, to summarize just for Ron, it sounds like we want this to basically be the first bullet point saying creates or explore creating a downtown master plan utilizing the urban renewal boundaries as the plan boundaries. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Should be bullet point number one. Does everyone agree with that on the commission?
I agree.
Yep, yes.
Ron, you got that?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay.
So do my things fall underneath that? And is there another bullet point that goes up there first?
We, so if, well, I would suggest we either do one or two things. You all suggest additional bullet points that you want on that list. Or you go through the current list and then, and edit how you see fit. And then add any additional bullet points you want at the end. But just to make it less confusing for Ron, let's separate those two, those two tasks.
And what you're really doing is, is the master plan and this planning effort should address these, can address these, you know, it's an incomplete list of these, these issues, and those are the bullet points.
Sure. So basically you could do a nestled list under that first bullet point. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it should be, consider these, but not limited to these.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And does anyone have any additional?
These are issues. These are issues to be explored by this planning process.
Yeah, these, basically this is what you want included in the plan, not limited to this list. Is there anyone else that has anything they want to add to this bullet point list of, just to make it specific, what you're recommending, recommending?
I want the tax abatement document added to that.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to say resolution number forty-five fifty-one, or just the resolution adopting a stat, tax abatement program. But that's not, that's for citywide. That's, that's in any historic district. So it's not confined to the urban renewal district.
Would that be an item that we include in the second, in our second item to strengthen the underutilized mechanisms in, in place?
Yeah.
Okay.
Including the tax abatement policy adopted by the city in twenty-ten or whenever.
Right, okay.
And it sounds like a tax abatement is one of the strategies. And then strengthening just the effectiveness of the urban renewal district is the other one I heard a lot.
Yeah.
Right. And strengthening urban renewal district, one of my bullet points was staffing. And I've argued that with the city manager, and they say, none of the committees have staffing. Well, you, we do here. And it's a very important entity to have someone on staff.
One question, Bob. And it's not just staffing, but, but you know, you might, you might establish a parking district under that.
When that's underneath here and then my.
Well, I know, but, but, but basically it would be staffing plus, you know, enhanced, enhanced resources.
Oh, you could do that.
Which includes staffing.
I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you'd like to, for that to be effective, you're going to have to develop more than a quarter million dollars a year. Otherwise, you're just going to be giving little facade grants and that, which are not insubstantial, but they're, but we're talking about a more comprehensive view than that.
Well, then we also have the park, work with park local development growth. That's an organization that's being done. And they, and they encourage micro and standard loans, which they're working on. They have both of those programs. If you go on their website and look at it, I talked to Katie Weaver about it the other day. And I mean, that's a program that can be used around the town.
Yeah.
Put that in bold on the list because that was a new thing that I just found out about.
Well, what we're talking about are a number of, a number of in place. And this is, you know, we might, you know, through that planning process, you might think of a few more that have been underutilized and could be utilized more. And maybe those should break out from that list.
What do you mean breakout from the list? You mean basically you're putting in a separate list potentially?
Yeah, I mean, the, that, that funding, funding is, is, it, you know, these are, these are, these are areas that are potential funding and maybe not exhaustive as opposed to, to planning, planning principles like, you know, EDUs and parking and housing densification, sort of separate funding and administration from planning issues.
So it sounds like, and I'm going to summarize again, basically it sounds like you want bullet point number one to be create a new downtown master plan utilizing those urban renewal boundaries and then have a nestled list with all the planning goals under that. And then bullet point number two is promote, encourage, expand, strengthen existing funding and administrative mechanisms that operate in the downtown area or something like that.
Now, looking at this list, let's, let's just say administrative and planning principles. Planning principles would be things like encourage infill development, encourage second story development. Part, well, either a parking, you know, develop parking and traffic solutions.
And I can use the things like.
Revitalization. Is housing in there? You know, it's an ideal place for housing densification potentially. But those are all planning principles. And a lot of the rest of these things are, are, are more administrative. Promote the historical preservation committee, support grants from TIF monies, reduce impact fees. Historic tax credit, low income tax credit, you know, all those things are funding and administrative mechanisms for implementation.
Ron, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's a lot of information I'm trying to, to.
Yeah.
I, simpl, simplistically, you've got the master plan, which wants to explore planning principles. And once those planning principles are established, all these other things e, either existing or, or potential could help implement that plan and those, and, and, and it's just that simple.
Yeah.
So you break that list apart into two kinds of things.
And Tom, are you talking about in that, I'm going to keep calling it the sort of subcategory under that bullet point? Do you think there should be two nestled lists under there? Do you think there should be?
Yeah, I think, I think I would like to separate sort of the funding mechanisms and the implementation mechanisms from planning principles.
And do you think the funding mechanisms need another big bullet point or just one under the master plan?
I think there's, I think there's like two, now I'm starting to say there's two, we need a master plan that the downtown, the downtown of redevelopment area is an ideal place to, to implement many of those goals. And these are some of the things that the, that, that ought to be looked at in that, in that master plan. Bang, planning principles in, in general, not how you do it, but we are, it's a, you know, should there be housing densification? Should we have, you know, how do we make parking and traffic work? You know, all those, they're, they're generic plant, pla, planet, bullet points, planning things that you should be looking at. But, but then there's a lot, and then there should be a separate thing is that, that the, there are a lot of funding and implementation devices that are in place that could be further enhanced and, and, and encouraged. And that, and that's that whole list of, you know, the, the other things on, on this list, you know,
Ron, does that make sense?
Things Bob really have to do with, 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 with money and administration.
Ron, did that make sense to you?
Um, I mean, I under, I think I understand the, the, the concept of breaking down this list to just.
It, it'll be easier to understand if it's in a, if, if it's in a couple of lists. I mean, what we're saying is that we ought to do a master plan. There's, there's, there's organizations and entities that exist that could be better utilized and new, new things that could be developed that could further, that could further enhance this implementation. So we sort of have an implementation section and a master plan section and saying that both these things should, should be included in this growth policy.
Okay. And then so, and then under this master plan item, we're going to, we want to break it down into kind of planning, planning principles and then.
Things, things that, things that are potentials of, of that, that, that are, that are planning issues. Let's, and let's put it this way. There, there infill develop housing densification, a downtown parking policy because, because parcel by parcel parking policies won't work. It's an ideal place for, for, for new housing, which, which encourage, encourage further healthy commercial development anymore. But there are, those are all planning things that would be elements of a master plan. And it's probably not a, an exhaustive list, but it's, sorry, you can, that's, that's the sort of category of the things that that master plan should look at. And then, and then you, then you have sort of how the city works and what it's been doing and how that could be better. And that's you know, the urban renewal agency, the, the, you know, our committee, you know, local, local groups and those things should be, you know, tax, you know, the tax abatement policy. They're all, they're all implementation devices.
And they're on my list, basically.
They're on your list, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just talking about breaking your list apart to making, yeah.
And I did hear two new additions to the potential planning list. So can we talk about those quickly? One was encouraging housing density within downtown. We have one that's encouraged infill, but I think that's a little bit different. And the second one was revitalizing, well, shall we say, or improving commercial viability downtown. Those were the two I heard from you, Tom, that were additions to that planning list.
Right.
Everyone on the commission okay with those?
Why do we separate parking and, parking and traffic?
Yeah, you know, traffic becomes an interesting thing because we went through a whole thing about one-way streets several years ago, and the town was totally against it. So I hate to make it sound like we're encouraging changing the traffic patterns.
Well, but it should be looked at. It, it's. Well, but it should be looked at. It, it's a.
It was looked, it was looked at exhaustively. There was a whole, uh, there was a whole plan done. Uh, it was a study that was done.
I, I remember, I, I, I sort of heard about that. It was a little before my time. But since that time, the, the traffic on Park Street hasn't improved, has it?
Well, that's, we can't do much about that because that's state.
Um, well, you can, you can make a, you could, you can certainly look at it.
They have. There's numerous studies, and I just, I just really wish that we don't.
You don't, you don't want to touch traffic as an issue in a master plan?
I think it already, I think there's been numerous traffic point already done.
Then, then if, if that's, if, if that's the case, then it should incorporate that, but it can't ignore it.
Right, well, you can look, can we say encourage looking at the, uh, traffic, uh, previous traffic studies?
Well, just, just, just a reexamination of, 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 of traffic.
Patterns or whatever.
Yeah.
I think if you have parking, designated parking, that will in somewhat affect the, uh, traffic flow to begin with.
Absolutely. And if you, if you, if you start to do something, you know, I don't know, I mean, if I was going to be, you know, looking at, you know, looking at underutilized parcels, looking at air.
Yeah.
Identify, maybe one of those things identify, identify areas where some of this stuff could happen, where, you know, but you're gonna, you're gonna be looking where things could change and where things should stay the same.
Right. So I'm going to summarize again, just for the benefit of the commission and Ron specifically, who's trying to take notes desperately here, and I can see him doing that. So under the created downtown plan, there are specific planning items that you all have said should be included, which are the ones that are on this list, which are encourage infill developments, encourage second story development.
Opportunities for infill develop.
Sure, and I'm not going to wordsmith right now, but I'm just going to run through the list, and then we can do that. Um, encourage second story development, get a downtown parking district or study commission, encourage ADUs, and then additionally, I have heard encourage densification of housing in the downtown area.
Housing, housing should be sort of one of those bullets, and it would include ADUs, housing densification.
Okay, so basically instead of encouraging ADUs, just say encourage densification of housing in the downtown area.
Including ADUs or, or new can, or additional opportunities.
Sure. And then, uh, ensure vital, a vital commercial downtown or vital commercial core to downtown. And then the last one I just heard was, uh, examine underutilized parcels.
Yes.
Do we have additions to that list at this time? I'm hearing no right now.
No, I was right, I was writing it down. I'm fine.
Tom, you had a comment on one of the languages, so let's go through that. I think it might have been second story, encourage second story developments with incentives.
No, that was, that's fine.
Okay. So are we all good with that first list?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, second list we have is the strengthening existing funding and administrative programs. And right now on that list, we have support grants from TIF monies, facade and structural upgrades, reduce impact fees in town for revitalization and preservation, encourage use of historic track tax credits, encourage use of low income tax credits, work with Park County Local Development Group to encourage, uh, micro and standard loans, encourage strengthening of the renewal, uh, urban renewal agency through staffing, and there was one other one that Tom brought up, and I think it was increased in funding. Um, promote economic development, urban realization, and historic preservation grants for the Main Street program. And then, um.
With tax abatement in there?
Yeah, thank you. Tax abatement was a big one. And then I, this last bullet point, I'm not quite sure, I think is probably just a different suggestion, um, to just add some language to the, the agency list at the end, so I'm going to leave that out for now. Does anyone have any additions other than a tax abatement, which, uh, thank you for bringing that back up?
Sounds okay.
Ron, did you get all of that?
I think I did, but you know, it would be really helpful is, is once, uh, we, we finish this meeting, could you send me the recording?
Yes, I can, absolutely.
Oh, and, and maybe just sort of quit that down and some, some additional draft forms, so if, just maybe by email back and forth, if somebody has a, has a bright idea over the weekend, or once you see that sort of in its.
I will say, we cannot do that because of Montana's open meeting loss. So you are going to have to take a vote and decide on the language tonight. Just a heads up on that one.
Or had it, or have another meeting.
Or we could have another meeting, which would have to happen Tuesday or Wednesday morning, um, because, well, that's not even true. Would have to happen Wednesday morning because the earliest we could notice it at this point would be, uh, Tuesday in the paper. So we could have another meeting Wednesday morning, just to finalize the actual letter if we do want to do that.
Could we do that? Could you just sort of do that, you know, as, if needed? Could you schedule that and then cancel?
It has to be advertised.
Yeah, and I don't think we can do it as, so, um, we've gone down a different path here, but basically last night I suggested the Conservation Board that they, they picked a, some language, and that they not only approved that that language be included in the letter, but then allow, uh, one of the members to draft that letter. I would suggest that you all do the same thing and trust that your recommendations and language will be included in that draft. I think that's probably the best we can do at this point, um, just because of the timeframe.
We've just talked about, I think we've gone a long way toward making good recommendations.
I think so too. I think it's been a great meeting.
Yeah, I think you guys have made some really good suggestions, and I think that's the best way to do it. And then if there are things in the letter, or you think, you think of something that you were like, oh, I wish that was in the letter, you can always add that as an individual comment from yourself that you think that should be added, um, which obviously isn't the board comment, but it is an individual comment, so you can make comments like that too.
So, so just so I understand, Matthew, we, uh, you, you know, we, we agreed today on the, on the, uh, the, the content of the letter, and I assume me drafting that letter, do you and I, can you and I coordinate between, you know, now and in Wednesday or Thursday, when, whenever it's due, when is this due?
Uh, we need this by Wednesday at noon.
By Wednesday at noon, so.
Um, and yeah, we can, we just basically, we can't discuss things as a quorum. And because we have to vote on the language included, because everyone has to agree, we can't just do scattershot additions through email, unfortunately, and somewhat fortunately, because it makes sure our process is transparent. Um, but we can talk back and forth. If you want to write a draft, and I can sort of go through and say, hmm, I'm not quite sure that's what they meant, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Isn't that, and, and we're, we're really looking to present this at the next, at that next input session, like the session that was held last Wednesday.
So what will happen with this is you'll send a written comment to me, and we will pass that on to both the consultant and the planning board as written comments, so they have time to look at all of those before their meeting. Uh, they will have a meeting on the second.
Should somebody present this on the, as a comment at, at that meeting?
I don't think any of the other boards are planning to do that. Um, you're certainly welcome to give them a summary or make public comment to that end, if you would like. Um, if you are going to do that, I would just ask that you vote on allowing someone to do that, so it doesn't look like someone is just representing the, uh, commission without some sort of authorization from the commission.
I think this should come in the form of a public comment at a public meeting.
You can always do it as a, as a, as a citizen rather than as a member of the board.
Yeah.
I, I prefer it be a, a citizen's comment, supporting it and with additions, if there is, as opposed to representing the whole board.
Okay. So, um, let's get through the letter, and then we'll work, we'll work our way through the process at the end. And, uh, we can make those decisions through a vote, just so, uh, it is fair and democratic to everyone. And I don't know if we have, the last thing I have hanging out here on this, uh, email from Bob is under City of Livingston, other entities add historic preservation commission, and that's just the language add to the existing growth policy.
Yeah, I, I think it's missing several. I, I got an email from the tree board today with their suggestions, and I, so I think several organizations needed to be added at that point.
Is everyone good with that suggestion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have other additions, suggestions, anything like that before we start moving into the process and of, of the meeting?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
The only other thing, and I don't know if it really, if, if we picked this up anywhere, but, um, in the, in the beginning of the, uh, of the, the, the draft policy, um, they, they reference, uh, design standards and, and, you know, I, I feel there should be some type of, of, uh, design standard in, in the, or some guidelines for downtown development historic, uh, in, in historic district.
That could be part of that master planning process.
As part of the master planning, but can we add, you know, it, it ties in with these, but I, I think.
Add that as a bullet in the master plan.
What was that, Tom?
Add that as a bullet in the master plan.
Yeah, okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, theoretically, we're supposed to be using, in our historic district secretary of the tier your standards, but I think it should be a bullet point just to remind people.
Yeah, no, I, I've worked in other historic districts where we've, we have specific design guidelines referencing heights of buildings relative to other, you know, we could, we could talk about the sawtooth, um, you know, building structure on the, on the east side, on the north side, and you know, th- th- there could be a, something specifically, uh, put in place to, to, you know, to, to deal with infill and, and other types of of development downtown, so.
Oh, I agree.
I'll add that as a bullet point. The other items? So at this point, do we, do we make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, the list in the, in the, the, uh, the preparation of this letter based on the items we discussed today?
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is that, is that proper, Matthew? We?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Um, if you would like to specify who does that, you don't need to do it in the motion, you can just discuss. Um, but at some point, we do need to specify who, who is doing that.
Well, why don't we just go ahead and, and, uh, and, and add me as the, as the, 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 the preparer of, of this letter based on the information that we, that we discussed today?
That's fine with me to add that.
Unless someone else wants to take the reins and, and, and write a letter.
Already made a list. You can write the letter.
Okay, so, uh, I guess there's a motion out there to accept all the items that we discussed today, and for, uh, me, for Ron Nemitz, to, to, uh, prepare it in a, in letter form that can then be forwarded on to the city. Is that, uh, is that correct?
Correct from my position.
Okay, so there, I assume there's been, there's, the motion's been made, and there's been a second. So, um, any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same? Motion passes? Okay, uh, I assume the next point of business is to end the meeting?
Just one more thing, um, because it was brought up. Do we want to make a motion to have someone represent the planning board, or not the planning board, uh, Friday, my brain is fried, Historic Preservation Commission at a meeting to summarize these comments, or do you all just want to make individual comments at the meeting, and are, and are you okay with that?
I think somebody should speak for the board and, and say that this is, this is our, this, this is our feeling.
I figure, I, I'm fine with that as long as.
That puts a little, I think that puts a little weight on it that wouldn't happen if we did it as individuals.
I think I, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as, uh, we don't deviate from what we presented.
Well, that's, that's, that, we can't deviate from what was presented, but we can't present what was discussed.
Right.
Can we just make a motion to that end that the Historic Preservation Commission authorizes, and just pick one of you, and whoever wants to do it can do it to.
Ron's the chairman, shouldn't he do it?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if I'd be, you know, I was actually going to see Tom if you wanted to, to represent.
I'd, I'd be happy to.
I think, I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with Tom.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that, uh, that Tom represent us at the, at the, uh, the next meeting of the, what is this, would it be considered?
December second, wasn't it?
Yeah.
December second, um, uh, growth policy meeting?
Five-thirty, right.
I make a motion that Tom represent the Historic Preservation Commission at the December second growth policy meeting?
I second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same? Motion passes? Okay, any other items, Matthew?
I've got no staff update.
Okay.
Hey, I'd just like to thank Matthew very much for all he's been doing, because he's sitting in a lot of these committees, and I appreciate you being here and saying, and we're helping us, uh, come up with a concise statement.
Yeah, no problem at all, and thanks for spending your Friday afternoon, uh, trying to make our growth policy better, so we appreciate that.
Well, thank you, yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, so all, all those, uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting at four-fifty PM. All those, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same? Motion passes. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
So, so everybody stay healthy and safe, and have a nice Thanksgiving by yourself.